The Oco Library Director. Kaitlyn Brown Assistant Director. Leanne Hammond's trustee.
Daniel Pritchard trustee.
Penny Peoples trustee.
Shepherd Ferguson trustee.
Mike Hanlon trustee.
And Tim Tracy trustee. First order of business is the secretary's report from the four minutes January ninth meeting. Is there any chance to take a reading of these or is there any comments or questions?
Oh, I wasn't here, but you mentioned the grant, the ADA grant.
Yes.
As expanding the patio, but it's also to install automatic door openers.
Oh, that's right.
On three of the rooms.
There was also an amendment requested in regards to language of the executive session. I have not changed, and so there's an additional amendment there that's not reflected in the.
Just a small thing under the budget request for FY 2020. It says she knows that Project Literacy are becoming employees.
Yes, thank you.
And they're working part-time. And then under ethics, you have Miss Hanlon.
I'm very fluid here.
In the chair, and I thought there were some states, but I didn't write any down, so.
I was clearly not on the ball for this last meeting. And no one caught that I had the wrong date in the head, so that's. That's an additional. This was basically a wash.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to accept as amended extensively.
Motion is made to accept amendments as amended on second, second, on favor.
Aye.
You guys have it. We will go to public forum. Mr. David Kane will be speaking for two minutes or less on autism politics in the library. You?
Thank you. This document was on the literature rack downstairs until six thirty tonight. It suppose, it seems to be advice about two immigrants on what to do if government officials enter their workplace. But there's a hidden bias in this document. You, I think you have the youngest eyes in the room, please open that, read the first sentence on the inside panel.
If it goes not to rules of following us to the public forum.
I'll read it.
Your, your.
I'll read it.
Thank you.
President Trump's attacks on immigrants affects immigrant workers and employers. That is the first sentence in this document. This is an unacceptable political bias.
So this is library business?
What, what?
Yes, it is, because this document was on the literature rack downstairs until six thirty tonight.
Of course.
That's what makes it library business.
Okay, but.
Are you like this document either removed or supplemented by someone who is a supporter of Donald Trump? Because this document shows an unacceptable political bias. Thank you very much.
Could I ask questions?
Sure. Public forum is over. Thank you. Next amendment, next item, we're gonna go out of order, we're gonna talk about the McCall Fund, please.
Okay, Emily's here, and as requested last year at this time, when we first talked about Emily's recommended program. You asked that she come back in a year and that she give you a report and ask for reauthorization of the program. So Emily is here to talk briefly about that. Right, and I know we talked a little bit at the November meeting, and I think I realized that nobody had seen what we had purchased. So you can pass those bags around. That's the tote bag that we initially purchased, five hundred of, that was what we authorized last February. In November, we purchased an additional three hundred of those. This is the one sheet of instructions that they get when they sign up. And they get their incentives when they reach their milestones, which are in green on the bag. It's one hundred books, two hundred fifty books, five hundred books, seven hundred fifty books, and a thousand books. They get to pick, this is just an example, the paperback books are usually picture books. We try to pick a variety of things that we think will be appealing. It's been a successful program. We've gone through basically the first five hundred book bags, rather, that we've purchased. We currently still have about three hundred plus, three hundred eight, three hundred nine bags right now. This season, winter, is not our biggest babies and under five season. It gets cold, it gets hot. Spring, summer, fall are definitely when things will pick up again, and that's what I expect to see happen. But we get a lot of really great feedback and positive enthusiasm about the program. People are coming in, they're signing up, they ask questions about it all the time. Coming in and seeing kids with their book bags all colored in is wonderful.
What's the most you've seen so far?
We have had one family finish already.
Really?
Yeah.
That's great.
Three books a day, every day. We'll read over a thousand books in a year. And we hear a lot of, oh, we've definitely read more, but we haven't checked our boxes off. So people are applying for it, which is really great. It's really encouraging.
Yeah.
And that's where we are.
So what you're looking for is reauthorization of this program for another year.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, so what might the cost factors be?
Cost factors? So we pay for the book bags. We pay for the book incentives, and we pay for printing. In November, when I came to the meeting, the trustees you all approved about four thousand-ish dollars to kind of help us amp up our supplies again, and we're still in good shape. I'm not in imminent need of supplies right now. It may be once summer gets underway that we will need to replenish our supplies. Right now, I still am sitting on about a thousand dollars to spend on book incentives. And like I said, we still have about three hundred bags to give away.
So maybe four months or so before you come back and ask for more?
Exactly, yeah.
So in essence, we're just reauthorizing the program?
Yes.
And we'll revisit the funding in nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. How's that? So is that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to reauthorize the one thousand books program.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
You guys have it, okay.
Thanks, Emily, thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay, let's go back to order and the early updates. Donal is not here, but he has left some.
Yeah.
Looks good. Somebody will have updates recorded.
It was very good.
Okay, the mic, mic pointed on.
Fat-free.
Calorie-free too.
Did Don leave that packet in thirty-three dollars?
No, not for me, no.
Okay, all right. Let's go to the financial reports.
Okay. So we have the MUNIS reports, the funds reports, and the HATCH financials. If there's any questions on those reports.
I always ask this question, are you fully staffed?
We still have the one opening for the help desk. We haven't advertised it yet because we're still trying to figure out where we need to go with that position vis-à-vis the outsourced IT services, so that's, we're still considering how to go with that.
But the vacancy hasn't really affected, you know, the.
No, we have two temps now who are filling in for that, and that's going okay.
I'd like to ask about the McCall gift fund, just, you know, I mean, there's a lot of money available.
Right.
How does that normally get expended, in other words?
Well, we, there is no normal way. It's whatever Emily recommends to you and you authorize, just like we just did.
Yeah.
So we did have the large furniture expenditure a few years ago. And then she said now that she, she wants to do the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program. So it really is, we look to Emily for a recommendation, and then we bring that to you for your vote.
So you don't use any of that money just for children's books in the normal course of?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is that, I mean, that's by design, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I mean, we're, we're well supported by the town.
Okay.
Would you use that fund to say replenish gains or anything in order to children's?
We could, if Emily brings that forward, which is a thing that she is looking for.
Are you on par with electable and yes?
Yes, yeah, we're fine with that.
So I actually have another question that came to me. You sent us something by email or something. About programming.
Yes.
You remember that?
Yes, so that has to do with our, the budget hearing that Tim and Leanne and I attended. So one of our requests for additional funding was for six thousand dollars to become part of the regular budget for programming.
Yeah.
So the question by the town manager was, are you saying to me that none of your programs are funded through the regular budget? And I said, yes, that's absolutely the case. So I followed up with this email to him and to you showing where we get the funding for our programs. So that's, that email that you have in your hand right there shows where the programming comes from.
Okay, and that aroused another question, which I found myself asking myself again when I read through the HATCH financials.
Yes.
So you have, in both these cases, you distinguish between special gifts and building committee.
Yes.
And I thought the special gifts all went to the building committee.
No, no, if someone writes a check to the Watertown Free Public Library, that goes into special gifts. If someone writes a check to the Watertown Free Public Library Building Committee, that goes to the building committee.
Is there a substantial difference in how those are handled or how they would be?
Yes.
What is the difference?
So if it goes to the building committee, the building committee as a group decides how that money is spent. I make recommendations to the building committee, and then they say yes or no. If it's in special gifts, then you as a group say, that's fine, or, you know.
The building committee is not involved.
Right, building committee is not involved in the special gifts whatsoever. That's trustee funds, library funds.
Well, I've been wondering too, Leanne, if we could, if we could have a report of the special gifts, so we see.
You do have it right there. Where, on your fund and grants sheet right here?
Wait a minute.
This fund and grant sheet.
Yeah.
So go about halfway down, special gifts, and then, and then you have Cohen Fund and Makerspace Fund are subsets of the special gifts fund.
Okay.
And we have exactly what's been added, what the deposits are, what's been expended.
Okay, but what I was more wondering about was getting information about who our donors are that give us these special gifts.
Okay, yeah.
I, I would really love to see that.
And reason why?
Yeah. I think, I mean, first of all, I'd like to have some sense of how many people in our community actually give to this library, and in what kinds of amounts of money. And I would like, if I know any of these people, to be able to thank them as a trustee. I know you, you send out thank yous, but, you know, my feeling is you can't get enough thank yous for any gift you give.
Well, you know, I, I, I have the problem with listing. I'm concerned about the denomination, the value, how much they have given. I would just say a list of people who donated refund, I wouldn't particularly think it's necessary to say Mary Jones gave a check of five hundred dollars, and Timothy Smith gave a check of twenty-five dollars. They're still deserving of a thank you.
Yes.
But I don't think the, the value of their donation or gift is really something that we should be debolging, lack of a better word.
But some of these gifts are years ago.
Well, the old, so there's year-to-date, year-to-date thirteen forty-seven for a year.
But I mean, so, for instance, when I look at this and I see that the special gifts, you know, okay, so that one has about five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Now, and you say here, as of seven one eighteen. Does that mean that's, that amount has come in this year?
No.
Or is that a carryover?
The third come over deposit year-to-date.
I see.
That's how much has come in this year.
I see, okay. And is that about standard?
I really, I also tell my, I have no idea.
Oh, okay. Well.
I would add that if, if it's really one's concern about violating privacy of letting people know who's giving so much. I think in most organizations I've been involved in where we're fundraising, within the organization, who gives how much is not a secret. But anyway. But again, let me fully finish. But having a list of, we got twenty, twenty donations of twenty-five dollars, and two donations of a hundred, and three donations of five hundred. That's useful information, and it could be done without putting anybody's names on it.
Yeah, it is useful information.
I'm sure it is useful information.
Because you was, you know, did yourself.
Move point, quite frankly, it's a move point. The thing is, if you want to say, okay, others thirteen hundred dollars, okay, there's been five donations of two hundred fifty dollars. Okay, that's a good, that's a good fun fact to have. Or you can say there are fifteen town members or citizens who have donated, and these are the, and these are the names. Okay, I mean, I think there is a privacy issue here, okay? And we're not fundraising shit, you used that word fundraiser, we don't fundraise here. These are donations, okay? Unsolicited donations that come in, all right? And so, yeah, we thank folks when they make an unsolicited donation to our organization.
There is a subcommittee working on some fundraising right now, and so I think, at least.
Well, of course, I thought it was sponsorship.
Sure, where we're going to people and requesting funds to be raised.
For the organization.
For, yeah.
All your organizations.
Yeah, 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 yes. But, you know, if someone is the head of a small business in the area and has made donations in the past, it would be useful to know.
Right.
For a situation like this. I don't think necessarily we need to know total amounts from each person, I agree. But it would be great to know who, who is, and, and, you know, for folks who are business leaders, and we have a situation exactly like we're in right now. It would be really helpful to know.
Mike, I would say that, looking at the fact that it's thirteen hundred forty-seven dollars year-to-date, okay? And previously.
That's July.
That's July month. July month, okay, so six months, I mean, it's not a lot of activity, okay? Certainly.
I totally agree, yeah.
So we'll be able to supply, kind of the names and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Make a motion we accept the financial report.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman's report. The acceptance of Friends of Project Literacy donations. This is more of a formal piece, after discussion with the town manager, the auditor, and the treasurer, who by the way, as an uncle and a cousin, I expect to, so her family certainly is in our prayers. We had a budget meeting, and we were talking about funds that were received, and we very likely would receive money from Project Literacy. And normally in town, you could kind of accept gifts, if you will, and you had to vote on it, and, you know, so that they know, they noted that's a gift, okay? And the gifts are special creations, like we go to the school committee, they, we got, so many gifts have been submitted, and we accept them. So what we decided was that we would identify these gifts from Project Literacy on the financial report, and when they happen. And then by our accepting of the, the financial report, we then formally accept the gift. It's more of a, a piece of protocol, but it's more formalizing the actual connotation of a gift was received, a donation was received from Project Literacy, and we accept it, it's gonna go into our JOC office, and that's pretty much all that is.
It's, it's going into the Friends of Literacy coffers?
Not pretty much, but Project Literacy, Project Literacy is making a donation to us.
Yeah, to the library, okay.
Right, so it goes, so we're accepting a gift from Project Literacy.
Okay.
Okay? And as such, we should approve it formally, and how we will do it, the mechanism we'll do it, is that Leanne will make note of the receipt of the donation in her monthly report.
Okay.
When that happens, and when that happens, we will vote on the report and accept it. And by virtual acceptance, we have de facto accepted the donation. So it's more just more of a legal.
Will it become part of the report that we generated?
Yes, okay? And that way, we're addressing gifts. Okay, we're, I don't think in previous times we were formally addressing.
But we receive those monies anyway, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's just a matter of formally exchanging.
Okay, okay.
Could I just ask a general question? Would it be, would it be viable to have at the bottom or someplace its own website to say gifts accepted?
We have a space on our website for that.
You have?
For both.
Okay.
There's a link to Friends of Project Literacy, there's a link to donate to the building committee, so there's both of those things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Director's report.
Okay, first of all, a Legmeg request. And this month, my Legmeg request is for three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to be approved for carpet cleaning. And you saw on the budget report that our building maintenance fund is getting really low. So I wanted to ask that you approve this, so we can get this done when we actually, we're needing it this time of year after all the solid. You know, everything has come in, so I gave you the quote, and also the Legmeg expenditures, our current balance in Legmeg, as you see on the fund and grant sheet, is, where's it, Legmeg ninety-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars.
Could I ask you a question in terms of this? Do you think you'll have to come back and do this again late spring? Because winter is not.
We could, we could, absolutely, we'll see how it goes.
So that was, that was my question. So the gala's coming up, right? And so how do we, can we time it so that we can get as close to the gala as possible, or do we want to just, can we speak in salt as we speak?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty bad right now, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so I guess we may.
We could do some spot cleaning prior to the gala if necessary.
Yes, just, just I would just keep an eye on that, you know? As, as, as my house is, don't pull back the shower curtain, you'll find suitcases. It's a running joke, it might also, it's not debolging any.
I make a motion that we accept the transfer of thirty-nine hundred and fifty dollars from Legmeg to the carpet cleaning project.
I'll second.
I'm being second, all favor?
Aye.
You guys have it.
Thank you. So getting ready for the five K this year. Emily is not gonna be in charge of it, but she'll be on maternity leave. Jamie is gonna take over that, and he's requesting that we do it on September twenty-first, Saturday. Want to get that cleared with everyone before we go to the building committee with that.
Fairon and Square is the following week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we?
Is there a fall?
We have, have we got T-shirts or like that?
We will have.
For this, so we might want to put something above the gala, one hundred fiftieth year.
Mm-hmm.
As just one of our year-long events, recognizing our one hundred fiftieth year of existence.
Okay, yeah, good idea.
Do we notify the high school of Boys and Girls Club in terms of younger population entering the list?
We certainly coordinate with Boys and Girls Club, yes, and we get the information out to everyone as.
The high school mostly.
As far and wide as we can, yes.
And have we ever offered, like, to have, like, the high school track team be able to run it without, you know, without making, you know?
We have a different.
Something like that.
But actually, we, I think we tried one year, but they had, they had me, I think, on that same day or something. We definitely tried coordinating something before.
It might be when, well, because then you get maybe some other family members, I mean, usually when you have runners from the family, there's other, you know, it might be a family event in a way.
Okay.
And more people than, you know, or just give them a, a break on the, the initiative.
Okay, I don't know, we'll look into that, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve this date, or?
Um, sure, why don't we approve that date?
One other question, we, this came up a few, few years ago with Farrell and Square, the Jewish holidays, I don't know when they are, but.
Yeah, we checked.
You did check, okay, good. All right. Yeah, good.
Make a motion to accept the five K date proposal, September twenty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Motion is made, second to accept the, the five K date, the September twenty-first. All favor?
Aye.
You guys have it.
Thank you.
Can I just, I just wanted to go back to the, 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 oh, the email that Penny had about the, about the costs and the programs, something like that. The manager was very surprised that we, in fact, don't have a budget item on that. And then, as he asked, why would we bring six thousand dollars, and don't we, and we told him we don't, that we don't fund it with these projects, so the programs don't get funded from the coin, he goes, oh, interesting. So he was surprised and happy that we do fund, but he was also understanding and recognized the fact that we should be getting some type of consideration in our budget. So I didn't want that to go without, the folks know that this is important, it's important to us, it's also a note as, as an important item over at the corner.
Right.
So just, I wanted to make sure we had that.
And we listed it as a first priority, right?
Yeah, it was, it was our first priority in order.
Given the number of programs you want, and the.
Yeah, it's good to, you know, it's, it's good to get in.
The quality and the number of people, I mean, actually, this is not that big a budget for that.
Right, it's good to get your foot in, and so, there is.
Great.
Okay. Let's go down to old business.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, anniversary, yeah.
Yes, anniversary.
So we have Caitlyn's draft proclamation before you guys get to.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, if we could take a look at that, and do we want to send that over to the town council? I know Caitlyn, you wanted to reorder.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I don't, it's not, it's not completely in chronological order, I just want to reorder a little bit, but.
Does everyone agree that this is what we should be having?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to say yea, but I'd also say, would we want to make sure we talk to our state folks as well, and get a proclamation from the government perhaps, okay? They kind of go hand in hand when these things are issued, so. Yeah, exactly, yes.
They just changed the rules around that, and I guess we might still fit in that, but just.
Okay.
I know that they just made an adjustment because they felt like it was getting out of hand.
Sure. So you want a piece of paper?
No one, no one would take proclamations, it's like, you know, they wanted to cut out, but I just wanted to mention it.
So we want to reach out to all of our state officials, like Scott and John, and, uh, tech, basically.
Okay.
All right?
I, one thing I, I thought might be interesting to include in this is the role the, the library played in encouraging the further education of the working community here. You know, they have, like, the reading room was available to laborers and. You know, they have, like, the reading room was available to, uh, laborers, and, and that was a somewhat unusual occurrence.
Correct.
And this being such an important industrial area.
Or the second paragraph.
Yeah.
Sorry, did I miss it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
It's just enough for.
No, I'm sorry.
It's just enough for one sentence and all, or you're gonna end up going to.
No, no, I, I think I missed it, I was reaching.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything after the warehouse clauses, because if that is, it's just.
Yeah, it's, it's all of the, the stuff that the town council puts on it, this is just like the backs.
Okay, okay, got it, all right.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Okay.
There is a second.
Well, there would be.
There would be.
Remind me, what kinds of things do they then say?
Um, hereby by the seal of my hand, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah. It's boilerplate.
Some guy back sixteen.
It's heartfelt, David, it's heartfelt, come on.
Do we have to do anything with this?
No, just if, if, we'll, we'll fix that up and send it over.
That's great.
Oh, we had other.
Yeah, I don't, we have other stuff for my question.
Yes, um, so Penny and I and, um, Katie and Pat from the building committee had a couple of meetings. And, uh, we've been working on getting a list together of, um, local organizations and businesses to approach to see if they would like to sponsor, um, the one hundred and fiftieth, um, events. And we've come up with a list that I've handed out, and we've, uh, put together a first draft of a letter. That will bring or send to, to most of these organizations, I think, with respect to Watertown Savings Bank, probably try to get a meeting.
Yeah.
And maybe send a letter beforehand or, or, I think right after, but, um, then, uh, so we're basically just looking for feedback on the letter. Two questions I have about it are, right now I have it signed by Penny and I, um, if that seems to make sense.
We shouldn't be Pat from the building committee as well?
Should it be Pat?
Yeah, because everyone's gonna exceed, they're gonna exceed the cash, right?
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So that's how, that's how we include them in there.
Okay.
And, um.
I mean, yeah, I had been thinking that it might be signed by you two, Ms.
No, I think, no, I think you could put that, um, Gala Committee or something like that, that's fine, yeah, that, that.
Okay. I mean, I think the.
I don't.
I think we want people to know that the trustees are behind this.
That's fine, that's fine, you know, that's fine, they can do that.
Okay.
But I would raise one issue, I'd like to have the town attorney okay that, because we would want.
Yeah, town attorney, he has an okay that.
Has, oh, okay, fine, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Just don't want to get anyone jammed up.
Right, right. The other question I had was, um, you know, we're, we're looking for sponsors and we've sort of set a threshold of five hundred for sponsorship, but that's.
We didn't have much, at least I didn't, I wasn't part of this last meeting, so I didn't discuss what threshold either.
Yeah, I took that right from your first initial draft, so I kind of took it out of.
I know, okay, I, yeah. I don't know, I mean, in some part of me, I think maybe gifts of a hundred and more should be recognized in the program.
Yeah.
I don't know how many we would get, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we're going to, mostly to businesses and institutions.
Yeah.
We can expect a higher level of giving, because they have a much greater capacity than, uh, residents would, so I think five hundred.
Well, that's true. Yeah, okay. It's good.
Yeah, or even a thousand, I think, you know.
And I do, and you did put in there, which I was very pleased, that they, they have to be here by March twenty, thirty-first in order to get, have time to get the program.
I'd like to request that, we'll move that up a little bit.
Sure, sure.
Not, it doesn't have to be super much, but just, um, for turnaround for printing and stuff.
Okay.
Um, so even just a week before that.
Okay. And I would say that, yes, a higher amount is better because that affects how much a cost to print a program of two.
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Yes, so.
Okay.
So are we finna date prior to the thirty-first or after the thirty-third?
Prior to, so like the twenty-fourth or something.
Twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth we find, and, and just, I think just making it clear that we need to have it in hand by, by that date received by.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
So are you, are you, um, you wanting to put down, um, like a thousand dollars as a, as a, the market, uh, I mean.
I think a thousand dollars is not a huge amount of money for most of the institutions that we'd be going to. I, I don't know, I mean, I think, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to say, the level for sponsorship is five hundred, could you give more?
I, you know, I, I.
And it's easier to say, you know, we'd like, we, a thousand, and if someone comes back to this, we, you know, we don't have that budget right now, or we can only do less, we can, you know, make.
It's not like we come to people every year, I mean, this is a kind of once, a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, it's really especially. We'll call you in twenty-one seventy.
One of the other things that we've been discussing as a group is really how we go about doing this. So on the one hand, there is this draft letter now, uh, with thanks to Leanne for doing a lot on it. Daniel has mentioned that, you know, nowadays you could perhaps just as easily send an email and then follow up with a phone call. But of course, the other thing we wanted to kind of see is if anyone here on the board has particular connections to any of these organizations and might be willing or able to actually speak with someone at the organization, or if.
And it could be a week after we send the letter, maybe just give them a call and say, hey, it'd be great if you could give, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But if you'd like to take a look at the list, everybody of, of potential.
I have one question about the list.
Sure.
Um, so the Watertown Community Foundation, we go to them for R E for grants for Hatch and for Project Literacy.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to endanger those, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, okay. I, I agree with that, and I knew that, I mean, we met, thank you Caitlin for meeting with us also to talk about some of these. And, and Caitlin had mentioned that. I guess my feeling is that, uh, they might like to be recognized for this. And it's not the same kind of money, I don't, well, I don't know how much you get for the.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah, this could, it's in the neighborhood if we're asking for, like.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, we're talking about gifts of five hundred dollars too, so, um, you know, I, I just feel as if maybe if they wanted to be part of it. And I, and that's one I would think to, to do in person. So, um, you know, I could go see Jam and say, or if, if people thought that was a good idea or not.
Well, sometimes you make it clear that we don't want to lose our own money.
No, no, I would, I would absolutely, and I, that's the point, I would say to them, of course, you know, we're really grateful to you, and we don't, you know, we don't really expect you to do anything more, but if you would like, this is coming up and it's a big event in our town. And you have been donors.
Yeah. Do you know Jam?
Uh, not really, you?
I do, but, yeah.
Well, then you should go.
By the way, I've had coffee with her, we've, we've talked a bit, my wife writes in some of their, uh.
Okay. As matter, but I don't know it well, so if you wanna do that, or together we could do it, whatever works.
Just gonna say this from now, because I give it, we're, we're on our main funding, progress to be endangered by.
Absolutely. Yeah, maybe completely clear, and also, you know, we'll call you in twenty-six minutes.
So, I, I, I would, um, with respect to the list, um, I was, um, wondering, um, we probably had, um, Bellos Savings Bank.
That's in there.
Are they, I looked at, I see what, um, I didn't see.
It's right down below Watertown, so.
Oh, it was, but I don't know, it's not there.
It's not, I don't mind, oh. Oh, this is the one you passed out.
Yeah, I know, so, I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
But it was in there, but yeah, yeah.
So, and, um, I wonder if, um, we would be, um, crossing a boundary with, um, canestral?
Canestral.
Canestral, did they did a ton of work in this building?
Right.
And I'm wondering if, um, does that become a ethics issue, so, um.
I know that we brought, talked about that last time, Tim, and in general, I have avoided known, um, um, vendors.
Right.
But, you know, Caitlin mentioned to us that she has a very good relationship with them, that, you know, the fact that library has supported them to a fairly well or something like that, I mean, you know, paid for a lot of stuff, had their services.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but, so that's like we're putting a squeeze on them?
No.
Because we could, they, because we, because we've given them.
So much business, so now we get to.
So much business, so we expect something back from them?
No.
No, that's how it just came across.
Well, yeah, that, that wouldn't be what we would do, but the perception of corruption is corruption.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with you, okay, it doesn't matter to me, believe me, I don't know anybody there.
No, it's a good note to make, actually, I think, yeah.
You know, one of the vendors I think that we could approach would be SAS, because we don't give them tons of money, and they have, the price that they've given us for, um, security system has been the exact same amount since I started. So it's there, it's not like, you know, uh, a quid pro quo with them, I think they truly support the library, and it might be, they might love to donate some money.
Okay, SAS.
Yeah.
Do, do you have, uh, I, I, at one point, there was a Watertown Film and Water Trade percent. Was it in?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they did.
I know, but did they ever trend pamphlets in terms of local businesses that the library has?
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are twelve hundred businesses at Watertown.
I think, yeah, I think.
And we had a list that Caitlin recommended to us, and we put a few names on here, but a lot of them are small, so to go to them and ask for.
Change the letter, ask them for a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but, you know, I think, I think what we talked about was that we didn't wanna, you know, go out and, we're looking for like twelve, maybe twenty, you know, Spotify sponsors, and then, because time's short, and we wanna get this thing rallied up, and we're not looking for tons and tons of money, we're looking for fourteen, twenty thousand.
Yes.
So I, you know, um, I get what you're saying, but, um, the list is comprehensive, because I have seen that before, and so.
There's about seventy-five businesses.
Exactly.
Caitlin gave me a question, I looked at that one, and there are a lot on it, but I wouldn't know what to do with it.
Satya over there. So anybody new, you know Satya over there? The architects, they're one of the biggest architects in the world.
Sasaki.
Sasaki?
Second American, that's it. I think.
That might be a good place.
I think there's a good place, because they've been a stronghold in the town for a while.
Yeah.
I looked at date in March twenty-four, this Sunday, and March twenty-second is the price.
I'm gonna do the twenty-fifth, I'm gonna do the twenty-fifth, okay.
And then, um, you also have another big, um, real estate guy in town, is, uh, Lamaki.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Lamaki Real Estate, so he might be, he has, he has kids in, so I'm sure he's coming down here.
Okay.
As far as reaching out, I think that if you know somebody, um, certainly after, what do you think of what stuff's going on? What do you think, what do you think in these letters that go out?
Um, we're gonna meet next week as a subcommittee and try to finalize it and get them out mid-February.
We're gonna distribute the work.
Yeah.
So, so, um, if folks, um, know of anybody who they would like to contact.
Yeah.
Um, we should coordinate that through.
Should we do it now? Because, I mean, I don't know if the, if anyone's ready to do that, but in order to do that later and coordinate, it becomes complicated.
Well, I was gonna say, you guys are gonna meet in when, next week?
Yeah.
So why don't we at least, um, if someone on the board here wants to talk, call somebody.
Yeah.
Why don't we say we're gonna call, you mean, who should we, out of the three?
It doesn't matter.
You wanna go, please?
Well, 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 but call some of the people too as well, so.
You can call somebody, yeah.
Sure.
I'll call you, okay, and, and, and I'll tell you who I'm friendly with on these things, if anybody else has somebody that they're friendly with.
Right.
Like the folks from the community foundation.
Yeah.
You know, um, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Great, that's all.
Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay, so, so we'll do this, contact you guys, contact Leanne, um, by when, you mean?
We're thinking what, Monday or Tuesday next week, yeah, yeah.
Monday, yeah.
Okay, so over the weekend, send a quick email to her, how's that?
And if, I, we also, if you would see anything in the letter that you'd like to have changed.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I just, um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the doll things, substantial gifts, uh, those, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a sticky wicket, you know, when you're asking for, you know, sponsorship dollars can range from five hundred to fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or they can exceed that amount, and I think that would be a good way to put it out there.
Okay. All right. All right, there had been thoughts of like having levels of sponsorship, but we decided to keep it a little bit simpler.
At one point we had.
Yeah, that, yeah, that gets complicated, but I just, you know, it'd be, you'd just send to their name, and now it comes down the line, that's how, that's how they get listed.
In order of our gratitude.
Although, so, we have been thinking about possibly approaching the Watertown Savings Bank for the banners specifically.
Sure.
And that's over five thousand.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but otherwise, we were thinking, leave it pretty loosey-goosey.
Yeah, yeah.
But do you think a range is a good idea?
I think a range is a good idea, gives them, gives them options, an opportunity, um, to go either low, high, or whatever, and then certainly, um, you know, the conversation with, um, any other particular group to say, you know, if you wanted to do sponsorship, you know, of the banners, that would be wonderful, you know, that, that conversation.
Did we mention, uh, like, you know, Paul's last name, who has his company created Commons Street and none of it?
Oh, yeah.
Paul, um, graphic connections, Paul Rego.
Do Rego, yeah, graphic and graphic connection.
Yeah.
You know, whether or not. Paul's a real local guy, but, you know, whether or not he.
He loves the library.
Whether he can, uh, say, we, you know, we could do X, Y, and Z, we could, we could do some, some conceptions and say it would cost X dollars, which might be less than.
Well, I think, what you're projecting. Well, I think for the banners and stuff.
Oh, he loves, oh, that's, uh. He's t-shirts and, yeah, clothes, stuff like that, yeah.
But he loves the library, and he loves Tom, Watertown, and so he may be, and he's also on, uh, road reading, so.
Okay.
He might, um, be able to touch base and mess up.
It's got a civic impulse.
Yeah, yes.
So, if, we're gonna take kind of share often, and if there's anybody else that you think poses an issue.
Well, I would say, um, have road reading, but they might be a couple of.
Road reading?
Yeah, road.
Yeah, you mean we can approach them?
Yeah, approach them, uh, okay. All right. Is that good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, new business.
So I did, uh. Um, so what we'd like to do, um, from now on at each, um, meeting is Jamie's printed up these signs, and if there are any places that any of you go frequently that you could drop off, um, the, the amount of time that Jamie has to go around town and put out flyers and such is limited. So, um, if there's anything, you know, if there are any places that you frequent, clubs, anything like that, um, it would be really helpful if you could, you know, drop these and pass them along. Um, I guess I, I'll leave it to you to take what, if you're going somewhere, you know, about, if you could take a couple. Um, I also, we also have this stack of, um, one look events, um, I don't know if any of you know any churches or anything like that, if you can, you know, grab a pile and pass them along, it would be helpful to us.
With, with those other ones, are you thinking of, that we should put them on bulletin boards?
Yeah, you know, anywhere, I mean, we're just trying to branch out, like, get our reach, you know, further.
Yeah. I see, okay.
Um, you know, Jamie's one person, and he, he can go out and do, you know, a walk here or there, um, but you all have connections in town too.
Yeah, sure.
So if you go to a diner, or you go have, go to a school event or whatever, um, so we're just gonna, I'm gonna, you know, Jamie's gonna pick out a couple of things, um, each month, and I'll bring these flyers, and you can pick some up and pass them along, it would be really helpful to us.
Um, before we move on, that reminded me of something, when does this usually come out, like, when will the next one be out?
Just, uh, just before, it's, is that February, March?
This is January, February.
Uh, just before March.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking, like, if this were out and had a lot about the one hundred and fiftieth, it would be a great thing to be able to insert with our letter, but.
So it would have a lot? But it won't be ready until, um, like, the, the submissions aren't due till Jane, to Jamie until February fifteenth.
Okay.
And it takes them a little bit of time still, because it's still new, so, so we don't wanna hold that.
But they, but they will be ready for our, um, will we be able to incorporate some of that stuff into our book, whether for the more busy gala?
We're gonna do a program, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're.
Okay.
I, I guess I had one other, could, could one of us or something, if we're going to the Watertown Savings Bank for the banners, could we get those mockups that you had? could we get those mockups that you had, could we get a copy of those? What the banners look like on the building?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll, we'll actually have the banners, like very soon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The actual things, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
We, we actually, we have, now that they got printed incorrectly, but they're, they're fixing it, so.
Those are for the, the, um, the land post, not for the building.
I do that every time.
Or the building wants to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Um, if there's, okay, um, request information, I'm sure.
So the, my evaluation report was in the, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, the. Okay.
But it was in the packet, just to call your attention to that.
Okay, so that was part of my, um, the question information, the director's review.
So, yeah, so what do you want in my self evaluation, that's my question.
I thought you were.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think my sense is to respond to the different, um, elements in each of the categories and to say, you know, something about how you think you've done with those.
Okay, that will take me a really long time to do. Because there's a lot.
No, I can't find my copy of it here, so.
Very bad.
It was, it was very bad.
Was it a full length or a short?
No, it was a question. I mean, this is the form, this is the last form that we did.
Right. Yes, what, what?
Um, but my self evaluation was, you know, an update on the, um,
Oh, yours.
on the, uh, action plan and some highlights of what was accomplished during the year.
So, um, I, I think, though, if I remember correctly, we would craft this and kind of reinvented it, if you will, um, that we were going to come back and do an individual, um, rating of these items, okay? Um, and then they were gonna be collected and given to, um, a, um, member and we were gonna come up with a, kind of like an average, and folks were gonna be able to put their own comments in, um, on the evaluation of the director. That's, I mean, that's how, that's how we left it, right?
Yeah, I, but I, we were gonna have Leon's self evaluation before we did that.
Right, and so, so, so in, in, I don't know, you know, I would, I would say, your self valuation would not have to go to these uh, six, uh, items and, and address each one of them, I would go out and give yourself a, a year, a year round summary, okay, that we have in the past, okay? And we would use that, okay, as, um, part of this tool, and then we would go in and go through here and say, okay, what did we think the long and short term, um, play for the long, short term directors and how they were here? And then we would give the rate in our comments if we wanted to, okay? Some folks chose not to give comments, but just to rate, okay? And, um, but some folks felt it was very important to have comments, so either way, um, the comments are gonna be included. If the, the overall rating would be a, um, accumulation of everybody's, and then we would divide and we'd hope with the average rating for, uh, task number one, okay? Surprise, so, and then the comments would be attached to, um, the overall rating, okay, of, of, of four. That's how we, that's how it was, I think, envisioned as we discussed, am I correct?
I think so.
Okay, so Leon, if you could just, you know, put together a year summary, okay, of your, of your wonderful, that's. It's kind of like a goat fly, I was talking about, I hate using that word. But, so, you know, you just, um, do your own summary review and whatnot, and we'll compile that, get that from you.
Okay, may I just say, I mean, I, I, I don't think Leon needs to specifically address each one of these bullet points.
No, 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 no.
But I do think there should be a summary for planning and work, so for each of the basic categories. Does that seem overwhelming to you?
Um, it'll take me a while, but.
Are you thinking something like paragraph for each?
Yeah.
Yeah, so not, not like a, not like a page.
No, not like, you know, but, but.
I'm sure she could write many pages on each of these, or, you know.
I mean, my, my, my memory is not great, but I thought even from your last one that you had done a fair amount of writing.
Okay.
I.
Both. Are we under a schedule, in other words, could you come back at the next meeting and give us that? And if this is, then what we would balance it with, and then the following month, we would meet again and?
I, I think, I think, if, if this is the timeframe, that Leon gives us the summary on the next meeting, okay? We take that, so that's March, and then on our April meeting, we come back with, um, the, the source document and our ratings, comments, and then we would compile, we would give them to the secretary to compile, come up with an average, and then, um, on the May meeting, we would have a final rating review, okay, and this is where we would come through, okay?
Yeah.
And you'll just, then, you would cut and paste the comments, okay, and come up with the average and.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
That sounds great, yeah.
Is that, is that the timekeeper work you?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so, um, request information, go around the table, Jan?
None of it.
Yeah.
None of it, your best.
Sure. Couple of questions on the building committee, um, how does it get, I mean, how do you get members to the building committee?
Um, it's been the same members for years, we don't.
That's what I meant.
Actually recruit.
Would it not be useful to have a few more members?
That would be up to the building committee, not to me.
Yeah, I talked with Pat about it, she would welcome adding more people on. Is there any kind of conflict of interest for a trustee to serve on the building?
Um, you would want to call the ethics committee and not commission to ask them about that, I don't know.
Okay.
Then, then secondly, how much input do we have on Friends of Project Literacy?
Um, and as far as what?
Well, I'm aware that they've been losing people who are really good people because of the way it's run. That's too bad. And we don't have much input in that, I gather.
It's a limited organization, yeah, so.
So we don't have, because it's, it's part of our budget, so.
They, Project Literacy is part of our budget, eighty percent of Project Literacy's budget is paid by the town.
That's what I meant.
Yes, so we are dependent at this point on the donations that we get from the friends, and they raise their money through individual donations and grants. So we're trying, what I've been trying to do over the years is to lessen the dependence on the grants, and we just were successful last year with getting extra funding from the town, so that's a process that we've been going through to, you know, to have the funding come more from this side rather than having to be dependent on the friends' donations. Um, so if you want to talk to the friends of Project Literacy about that, um, you know, they come to a meeting every year, so that could be on the agenda where you discuss that with them. I, I'm not sure of any other.
Do you need to change your.
Ten days.
Matter of change?
Yeah.
Sorry. Homer Rose has her phone.
Yeah, we're good, we're good. We're back, yeah.
You're back up?
Yeah.
Thanks, Ed.
All right, was there anything else that you needed, Chip?
No, no, you.
Mike?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have anything either, we have a fresh battery, so it's like. So, um, the date of our next meeting would be, um, three, five, nineteen, first Tuesday, that one. Everybody good with that date?
I may not be.
Okay. Um, be away, or is there something we can move to on Wednesday, or?
I mean, I, I could probably move it to a Wednesday if, but I don't want to make everybody change plans if it's not needed, I don't know.
Well, you guys would be able to report back on, um, on the Gallup Committee, correct?
Right, yeah, we could do that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's just hold this, hold on to the regular side.
Okay, and I might be able to come, it's just, I'm not sure, I won't be away.
Sure.